I will now call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on October 24th, 2023. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
So many people that want to do this.
Or I'll second. I'll second Mitch's motion.
We'll go with Jones. Moved by Jones, seconded by Gross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Number four, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual speaking time and the overall comment time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So I don't think anyone is with us to speak tonight. Okay, so we will go on to item number five. This is the third reading of an ordinance that would prohibit smoking and tobacco and nicotine in our parks, on our trails, and near our playgrounds. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1013, an ordinance amending Chapter 43 of the Coralville Code of Ordinances of the City of Coralville, as previously amended, incorporating tobacco and nicotine free parks, open spaces, and trails within the city. Introduced for third and final consideration by Councilmember Knudsen, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any final questions or comments on this before we vote? All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Number six, urban renewal areas. This ordinance sets the base value of Lot 7 Coral Ridge Commerce Park, Phase 7, in the Coralville urban renewal area. This is the Oakdale area on Cross Park Road, and this is the lot that has Barrett's Deli on it. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1014, an ordinance amending ordinance numbers 608, 707, 2001-942, 2006-1052, 2013-1009, 2014-1007, 2017-1017, 2020-1014, and 2022-1014, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the Coralville urban renewal project area in the City of Coralville, County of Johnson, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Coralville, County of Johnson, Iowa City Community School District, and other tasking districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with said urban renewal redevelopment project. Introduced for adoption, first consideration by Councilmember...
Gross.
Aye. Seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Any questions or discussion on this item? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Number seven, Northeast Area Water and Sewer Connection Fees. This agenda item has two parts to it. The first is a resolution that would acknowledge that the property owner has paid the full amount owed for the connection fees on certain lots in Forever Green Heights, Phase 2, Part 2, and this will release the liens for those fees on these lots. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution acknowledging payment in full of the Northeast Area Sanitary Sewer and Water Connection Fees levied against certain parcels located in Forever Green Heights, Phase 2, Part 2, Coralville, Iowa. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions or discussion on this item?
Just quickly, Madam Mayor, this is the project that we did jointly with North Liberty many years ago to provide water and sewer to that area. That's a joint utility out in that area, and we paid them for the project, and this is how we recoup our funds from as developments occur.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
So every time they completed another division, this will...
Yeah, every time they plan a subdivision, they have to make their payments, and so it's divided down depending on where there's, how big an area they're subdividing.
All right, anything else? Roll call.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. On to the second item. The property owner for this next item has paid in the full amount owed for the connection fees on certain lots in Forever Green Heights, Phase 2, Part 3, and this will release the liens for the fees on these lots. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution acknowledging payment in full of the Northeast Area Sanitary Sewer and Water Connection Fees levied against certain lots located in Forever Green Heights, Phase 2, Part 3, Coralville, Iowa. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number eight, Oakdale Trunk Sewer Phase 1 Connection Fee. The property owner has paid the full amount owed for the connection fees on Lot 1 in Altmeier Acres, and this will release the liens for those fees on this lot. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution acknowledging payment in full on the Oakdale Trunk Sewer Phase 1 Connection Fee for Lot 1, Altmeier Acres, Coralville, Iowa. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knudsen. Questions on this item? Roll call.
Councilmember Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number nine, Financial Services Agreement Amendment. This amendment adds financial services for 2023 sewer revenue bonds, and this is for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank Phase 1 Project. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving an amendment to the Financial Services Agreement with Piper Sandler &amp; Co. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knudsen, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions on this item? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 10, Sewer Revenue Bond. This bond will finance the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank construction, which includes the improvements of Reaches 1 and 3 and Becky's Creek regions of Clear Creek. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution to fix date for a public hearing on proposals to enter into one or more loan credit agreements to borrow money that are under any principal amount of $2,500,000. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions on this item?
Remind me why this is under sewer, this project?
Because that's considered part of the Clean Water Act that deals with sanitary sewer and these areas because you have effluent that goes out into waters like this. And so this is one of the things that you can do under that because there's multiple ways to obtain clean water, and doing these projects are one of those.
Okay.
All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 11, Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank Construction. We have two parts to this agenda item. The first is for an agreement assisting the city with the construction, engineering, and administrative services for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank construction. So we have our Parks and Rec Director, Sherry Proud, here to give us some information on this.
Yeah, we, this is, this, like you said, this is for the Clear Creek Stream mitigation. We've worked with Bolton &amp; Mink for a number of years here with the city, both Engineering Department and Parks and Rec, and have had very satisfactory projects with them. Impact 7G, who's taken us through the stream bank MBI part of it, will be able to still be a subconsultant, but this changes over to construction, and we feel very comfortable with Bolton &amp; Mink under the construction portion. We went through, in past contracts, we got to an 80% design with the stream bank mitigation, and this will take us then to 100% design through bid into construction, and they will be our team leader with our, with all of our, our subconsultants and contractors and subcontractors. And we'll lead that charge. We'll also be educating myself and our staff about what we're looking for when we go out and do inspections, as well as they will be conducting inspections. So we're taking that role on together to be able to save a little bit of money. And then, and then there's also some really exciting things as part of this contract, like cameras above some of the construction areas, so we can see that 24/7 live, and also some signage and some education programs. We'll be doing tree planting with our, either a workday with our city staff or volunteers, and then lastly, they will be responsible for developing a before, during, and after video that we will be able to use for promotion and to educate the public. So I think, I think this will be a really great contract with us, with them.
Great. Thank you for that overview. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with Bolton &amp; Mink for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank Construction. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Any discussion on this agenda item?
I should know this, but why doesn't this have to be put out for a bid?
It's a consultant agreement, and consultant agreements you can choose to do, to just go and get...
No matter what the amount.
Pricing, right. And so we've been already working with this company for four years, and if we went out to do a bid on this, you would probably have to go back and start over on the first part of what you've already done. So it doesn't make sense to, to do a bid process with, with this kind of a consultant agreement.
And you're not, obviously not required to.
You're not required to.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item B, we will be setting a public hearing on the plans, specifications, estimate costs, and form of contract for the Clear Creek Stream Bank Construction on November 14th, 2023. The project includes improvements of Reaches 1 and 3 and Becky's Creek regions of Clear Creek. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting a public hearing on the plans, specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank Construction. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions on this item? Roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 12, easement agreements. This is for permanent and/or temporary construction storm sewer and drainage easement agreements needed for the 1503 Brown Deer Road Storm Sewer Outfall Project. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving an easement agreement in connection with the 1503 Brown Deer Road Storm Sewer Outfall Project. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Questions on this item?
Yeah, this is the project that we've worked on for several years. There was disagreement with the homeowner. If you recall, the neighbors wanted this project to occur, and one of the homeowners that was affected did not. In the consent agenda, we actually have the, for the construction of this project, and so the, we have worked all the agreements out. This is obviously easement, and then we would do the construction, and the hope is to get that done in November. There will be a new homeowner moving into that property in late November.
And just, because this has been several years...
Yes, it's been...
...in the making. It's been at least six years or five years.
Yeah.
When we had the neighbors come and actually chat with us during a work session about the drainage into the pond, correct?
Right, yes. And this will get rid of the pond, and then deal with the drainage from this road and take it further down into the creek so that it'll get, and it ultimately ends up in the ponds at Brown Deer. The neighbors all had worked with Scott Larson, our city engineer, for some time on solutions, if you recall, but then there was just one of the property owners that did not want this to be resolved, and because they played an important part with their property, we needed an easement. That was what held it up.
Because their pond, the pond is on their property.
Um, yeah, the pond is actually on two properties.
Okay.
The corner property and then, and then this property.
And this would also address that erosion.
Yep, yep. The erosion both upstream and down from the pond.
Awesome.
Is this a challenging project because of the progress?
Yes. It's significantly higher price than you would normally see for the distance and what we're doing, but it, since it's down in a hole, you know, if you think about it, how they have to get equipment down in there is not easy, and then doing restoration as they make their way back out of that location. So that is the real struggle with this.
Yeah, it is definitely in a, in a very tricky location. Very tricky, and some significant erosion back there. So, yeah, it has been, it has been a long time coming, addressing this. Any other questions or comments?
Is this, is this hole 13 pond?
No, this would be right, it would be the corner property at Brown Deer Road and Holiday Road. You think...
Way up there.
The one that faces the corner, and then the next property in on Brown Deer Road, and then there's a pond, what's left of it, down at the bottom of that hill, which you can hardly see. I mean, it's really small, and...
Back in the woods there, then, huh?
Yeah, right on the edge of the woods.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure that out.
Roll call.
Councilmember Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 13, IRL Parkview Phase 2. This resolution accepts the public improvements for IRL Parkview Phase 2. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting public improvements constructed on IRL Parkview Phase 2, Coralville, Iowa. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knudsen, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions on this item? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 14, procurement cards. This allows the new position of education supervisor for the Center for the Performing Arts to be issued a procurement card by the city. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution designating the position of education supervisor for the Center for the Performing Arts to the list of certain positions allowed to be issued a procurement card pursuant to the Coralville purchasing policy. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions on this item or discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 15, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to Q.
Moved by Quinn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Number 16, city administrators' report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Several things to report tonight. First of all, last week I got the honor to participate in the ribbon cutting for Integrated DNA's new therapeutics manufacturing facility out at the Research Park, and this is on their Oakdale Boulevard facility. They also have a new building opening on Cross Park Road. It was really exciting after all these years for them, to see them continue to invest in Coralville and invest in new technologies and new areas. And I'll let Councilmember Knudsen describe to you what this all means, because I understood just parts of what they were talking about, but they did say it was a cutting-edge genomic therapeutics. Is that right?
Genomic, yeah.
Genomic, okay, yeah. And so this, my understanding of this is that this will actually manufacture products that go into humans versus everything they've done up till now has all been involved in research activities. So just another great investment by them, and they've already allocated funds to expand internally in that facility more space. So they're confident that there's a market for what they're doing, and it was just really exciting to see them celebrate that. This Friday at 3:30, we'll be celebrating with SIFCO Medical on the groundbreaking of their new facility, and this is out on the Altmeier Farm directly across from Lowe's, and this is something that they've been working on for, for over a couple of years, and they will be consolidating the office space that they have in Coralville and the manufacturing space that they have in Kelowna into one new facility, and will be all under one roof in one location. And so congratulate them on their upcoming groundbreaking. Just wanted to make sure everybody, the public knows that starting next Monday, on the 30th, we have a private contractor, CIT Sewer Solutions, that does cleaning of lines, of our sewer lines, and we have the city divided up into several different locations, and each year they do a different section. Starting next Monday night, they will be doing a lot of the work in some areas in the evening, late in the evening, and then early in the mornings because they're high-traffic areas. So if you see people out at our sewer areas on First Avenue, 12th Avenue, Second Street, and then on the bus routes in that neighborhood, that's what they're doing. They're just doing the annual cleaning of those areas, and thank them for taking the effort to do it at odd times so they don't disrupt the traffic. Next Monday to Thursday, we are honored to host the state high school girls volleyball tournament in the Iowa River Landing at Extreme Arena. Last year, obviously, was a big success, brings lots and lots of people here. We do have construction going on in First Avenue, and so we have been, we are in the process of encouraging the teams that will be making it to the state tournament, talking to them about making sure that they use both the Coral Ridge Avenue exit and the Dubuque Street exit, depending on which way they're coming, just to help with traffic in those areas. So just remind the public that next Monday through Thursday, that First Avenue area will be a little disruptive. They've done a lot of things to try to help with that. As far as the tournament, they are alternating start times for the actual on-court events instead of having them both at the same time, and adjusted their times accordingly. So we thank them for that. They also included the parking fee in the ticket price, and so the gates will be up, and people won't have to be stopped going in for parking. So several things that they've done as well to help us make it as smooth as possible. So city staff, both Mary Fisher and Scott, will be monitoring all the traffic signals with our computers so that we can maximize the traffic through those areas the best that we can. Last thing, in regards to that same construction, the tentative switch-over date for the First Avenue interchange will be November 15th, so that'll be the day after the next council meeting. Scott will be here at that meeting just to go through that with you. We'll be putting out lots of information to the general public, because there will be some movements, as Councilmember Knudsen asked last time. There will be a few movements that you won't be able to do or that will change from the way things are now. So we just want to make sure that everybody pays attention in that area. The pedestrians will be going in a different, in the new location. They will, there will also be a couple of movements that you can't do during this next phase of construction. So just be on the watch for that, and roughly the November 15th will be when we change sides of construction. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Mayor's report, I don't have a lot this evening, just a couple of things. I wanted to remind folks that on Sunday, October 29th, there will be a party at the Coralville Rec Center celebrating its 50th anniversary, and there will be a lot of fun 70s-themed games and activities, and there will also be admission to the pool with the 1973 price that was charged to get into the pool, which is $1. So a reduced, a reduced fee to get into the pool that day. You'll also have the chance to take a look at the new plans for North Ridge Park and see what's up with that, and maybe give some feedback on those plans. And then the last thing I just wanted to note is that Monday, or I'm sorry, Tuesday, is Halloween, and it'll be a very busy night with a lot of kids and a lot of families out and about. So just be careful if you're traveling on Tuesday night for, for kids being excited and running around the community. Let's keep them safe. Let's keep, keep everybody having fun on Halloween night. And I also want to thank the Coralville PD for all of their work in patrolling, and again, keeping everybody safe on Halloween. And that is all I have. City Attorney's report?
Uh, nothing.
Uh, nothing.
Okay, great. Committee and council members' report. We'll start down at this end with Lori.
Okay, I look forward to all the activities that have been spoken so far, and just wanted to add one more. November 2nd, it's Thursday at 4:30, the Johnson County Museum, Historical Museum, will have their open house and ribbon cutting, and that is located down underneath the arena at the, in Coralville. So just wanted to mention that. Thanks.
All right. I'm writing that down so that I remember. It wasn't on my calendar. Councilmember Jones.
Madam Mayor, my list has gotten short based on the comments made before me, but a couple of things I wanted to note. First of all, the Veterans Memorial is reaching its finalization. Still a ways away on the fundraising numbers, but getting very, very close. So I just wanted to note to citizens, if they were thinking about contributing or buying a brick at the Veterans Memorial, now's the time to do it. There was a committee meeting this afternoon, and the hope is that fundraising can be wrapped up, the work can be done, and definitely be ready by Veterans Day of next year. But if you're thinking about it, a nation, now's the time to do that. And then I also wanted to note, we won't have a council meeting before the next election. There is some, there are some early voting opportunities this weekend. I know the library will be hosting early voting as well as the county auditor's office, so just wanted to note that as well. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have much to report on, although I would like to take this opportunity to thank Chief Ori and his team. A few Mondays ago, I had the opportunity to go out to their training facility and witness some of our new volunteer firefighter train, and it was quite an eye-opening. I would encourage anyone who would like to see what our volunteer firefighter go through to prepare, you know, for disaster. I don't like to use that word, but that happened. The extensive work that they put in, the effort, and all of the knowledge that they have to gain in order to, you know, keep us safe. I really, really appreciate the opportunity, so that's all I have.
Thank you. And that is a very impressive facility out there. If you haven't seen it, it definitely is worth going out there and taking a look at it. Okay, Councilmember Gross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Thursday, we did have a CVB meeting. Just a couple of things. Kelly mentioned volleyball, so that was my thunder, but it's okay that you stole it because Wes has already been eliminated from that competition. But the two things, our audit report was given at the meeting. Things are in very good financial shape with the CVB, and then the other big thing is the herkies on parade are kind of out for bid. So if you're interested in having a herky, please reach out to the CVB to thank Iowa City. Then the, the last thing I just wanted to end on, and I wanted just to give a, to comment, at the last Iowa City Council meeting, the Iowa City Council meeting was interrupted with absolutely barbaric and brutal racist and anti-Semitic language from a Zoom bomber, and, and that's absolutely horrific, and I'm so sorry that our colleagues had to deal with that. But it was also reminded me of when we were getting a lot of pressure here to have, allow Zoom comments and that, and this was one of the reasons why we said no to that, because we were, or at least I was fearful that something like that would happen. It's just very, very hard to regulate Zoom comments from that standpoint. So I'm really, at this point, glad that we made that decision that we did for public comment. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then last but not least, councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. Going to be working on Friday, so I'll miss the SIFCO thing, but I do want to reiterate what Kelly said and add that, you know, thank them for, for opening up the facility here, but also the city staff who worked for those two years equally hard to accommodate them and find a spot for them, and Dave and Kelly in particular, I know worked hard, but, but all the city staff who work on that appreciate that. Speaking of Iowa City Council, I wasn't aware of this Zoom bomb, but I did see that they are starting to charge for electric vehicle charges, in part because of state taxes that will be going up specific to that. I don't think we are doing that, but I think it's something we can consider. It's, it's something on the order of $4. I've never, to be honest with you, understood why we do it for free anyway. We don't give free fuel to, to other vehicles, but down the road, I think, you know, they've done it. I think it's mostly in their, in their parking ramps, and, and I don't see any reason why I wouldn't. I know I would support doing something similar. Just wanted to make note of that change. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Quinn.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.